Good evening. It is Monday, February 22, 2016. It is 7:00 PM and I call to order the second meeting for the month of the Speedway Town Council for February 2016. I am David Lindsay, President of the Town Council. I'd like to welcome other members of the council present with us this evening. To my far right, Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate right, Vice President of the Council, Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my left, Councilor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Next to Jason's, our Town Manager, Ian Niccolini.
Good evening.
And our Clerk Treasurer, Monty Combs.
Good evening.
Our agenda for this evening has been posted, which we will follow this evening. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two in our agenda is approval of the February 8, 2016 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Those have been distributed. Any corrections or changes to those? Hearing none, those be approved as presented. Item three is approval of our Joint Executive Session Memorandum of February 8, 2016. Again, those have been distributed. Any corrections? Hearing none, those be accepted as presented. Item four is a proclamation. A proclamation for Tri-Cappa Week in Speedway from February 22 through February 28, and we've asked Councilor Delisle if he would read that for us, please.
Okay. We have here a proclamation declaring Tri-Cappa Week in Speedway. Whereas, the officials of the town of Speedway, Indiana, would like to congratulate Tri-Cappa on 100 years of service and financial contributions in the state of Indiana. And whereas, the Speedway Epsilon Eta Chapter was installed on March 9, 1951, and has funded scholarships for Speedway High School graduates. And whereas, Tri-Cappa gives $1 million annually to local and statewide charities, culture, and education. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Speedway, Speedway Town Council proclaimed the week of February 22 as Tri-Cappa Week.
Thank you.
Well done.
It's great. Item five on our agenda is an Exchange Club event. Ian, if you'd like to introduce our guests, please.
Gibber, are you gonna... You presenting?
Mr. Lynn McCallmit.
All right.
Chairman of the event. Very good. Thank you.
Did you get past Dollar or Blue Flyer there?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Let's get this set up somewhere that we don't lock the camera, I guess.
See this camera here?
Scoot back.
This one over here?
Come back this way?
Even.
Yeah. See that camera?
I see it. Oh, okay.
Might put it beside you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Great. Many of you, some of you look familiar. We have been here before, before this council, back in October of 2014, trying to pitch an event for last year. We were unable to put that together. This year, there's been a couple of significant differences. Number one, the club itself has budgeted an amount that we think's a minimum amount to actually put this event on. Number two, we have an actual sponsor. Check-in hand, Money in the Bank sponsor here already. I'm sure you're familiar with the Will Shaw Group that's building this development. They're on the corner of 16th and Main. So they're already supporting us. We're in discussions with other local people, sponsorships, but this is the only one that I can really put their logo there right now. We do have support from a couple of other areas. The Indy Racing Experience is renting us their stage at a very reduced rate, which will help us put our entertainment event on. And I've recently been in discussions with Ray's Trash, kind of the same thing. They're gonna donate the cardboard trash containers and give us a much reduced rate to haul the trash away. You can also see there on the third page that we are, we have, we are only waiting for approval to enter into a contract with these entertainment groups, Lemon Wheel and First Degree, Next Degree. And fortunately, they're holding the date open to us to see if we can get the event done. Now, I would love to be talking about a street fair that encompassed the whole street of Main Street. And we're hoping to work with the town of Speedway. This event not only is intended as a fundraiser for Exchange Club and for our national project of the Prevention of Child Abuse and Neglect, we're hoping it also fits in with the Speedway plan of making Main Street and Speedway a destination place from all over the city to come here. And a street fair with booths, food, variety of entertainment. The carnival booths, these are, we have about a half a dozen other exchange groups around the state that are gonna bring different booths, events. We want this to be a family event, appeal to all ages, and we have at least a half a dozen of them committed to help us at this point. There's one significant change that I'd like to make in this. We have also got the food trucks here. In talking with Connie Harris and the Chamber of Commerce, we got the feeling that maybe some of the local eating establishments aren't really all that in favor of food trucks. So I want to reach out to them first. We felt like we really needed to make sure we had an event and we had a day, but the second page there that you're looking at where we talk about food trucks, as you know, that whole section can be easily changed to focus on local Speedway residents. And of course, we know you've got this taste of Speedway coming up, which will also give people and us an idea of what all the different restaurants are. So I hope that's a little more detail, and I know that I feel we're a lot further along on this than we were last year, and the dollars in particular.
Lynn, so last year, the council held the dates for the event. Is that kind of what you guys are looking for this evening, or really just to kind of provide an update and we follow up with?
Well, when I came here in October, we were asked to come back to the council and rephrase the question. We realized it wasn't gonna happen. I'm not entirely sure what I... I thought I made an appointment with Michelle to be on the docket.
Yep.
And we were just going to come here and say, "Sorry, we're gonna try again next year. We couldn't do it." We got here, we weren't on the docket. So our full intention was to come and say, "We can't do this this year." At this point in time, and as late as the date is, we're looking for approval or nonapproval. As we move forward now, like the bands are wanting me to sign a contract.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. The, have you guys had a chance to check if there's events at DeLara, or in their event center that weekend?
We've looked at the racing schedules. We don't know for sure that, I can't swear that they are or not having anything.
So there were a wedding in the middle of all this, or something else, it'd be something we'd wanna be cognizant of, at least to be able to plan for it. Mr. President, one of the things, I mean, this council has pretty wide authority. You all could just approve an event on the date, provide direction to your staff to coordinate with the event providers and sponsors and the Exchange Club, and just make sure that all those relative bases are covered. There's a lot of staff involvement in that. But as far as approving a closure and a date for the event, subject to what we could call administrative approval, you guys certainly have that authority.
What hours are you?
We're talking to the bands about starting 6:00 in the evening, playing till 11:00. This is centered around the longest day of the year. It's not, our idea is to have it on the Saturday that's closest to the spring solstice there, summer solstice maybe. And so we would not need the street to even think about being closed before 4:00. And also want to point in mind, we have met with the police and the fire.
Yeah.
We are talking about a two-and-a-half block area here, where we're not at all talking about shutting down the entire street.
Mr. President, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with this, and then if we can get a second, then we can have some further discussion, just to try and follow Robert's rules. So in that, I make a motion that we approve this festival on Main for Saturday, the 18th.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from the council?
So with the sponsorships that you have to this point, with the experiences you have as a club, with the things you've heard from other clubs around the country, what's your confidence level? Now, in no way a negative on your not being able to go forward, because I remember distinctly you coming before us before and saying, "This is what we were trying to do. It's the first time for us, and we may come back and say we can't do it." And you did that. Maybe not formally, but you were upfront about that.
Right.
So what's your confidence level now?
I am confident that we have money in the budget to put this, that something will happen. There will be a bandstand, there will be food to buy. It'll happen. I have no idea how many people I can draw to it. And you mentioned in talking with other clubs, which I have at our national convention, I've talked about festivals, everyone has told me that these things have to grow.
Oh, yeah.
It's not gonna be a huge success the first year, but stick with it and grow it.
So you mentioned you'd talked to the chamber. Have you talked to our police department?
I have.
You may have said that earlier and I missed it.
Captain Deardorf and I believe the assistant.
You mentioned Mike Lynch.
Great.
And they want us to come back and, prior to the event, and clean up all the details, too.
Any other questions?
I think it's great that we've got another civic organization that wants to utilize Main Street, and I think it's, you know, I'm definitely supportive of it.
I sit on the chamber board. I saw, we had a chamber meeting a week ago, and then one a few weeks before that, and we had a long list of events. I remember this one being a question mark, but a potential event. So I know there wasn't anything from a chamber standpoint that was in conflict with it. I actually hope that DeLara does have something planned in their building, and it just brings more people to Main Street.
I don't think I'd, I don't think I'd be opposed to it.
Except for the street parking, but otherwise, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Exchange Club's event on Saturday, June 18, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Item six on our agenda is approval of blocking off parking spaces for a St. Patrick's Day event on Main Street. Ian?
Mr. President, the, per town code, the council is the, outside of an emergency, the exclusive legislative body in charge of restricting parking spaces. And as such, you have a request to facilitate, a request to restrict parking. In fact, in front of Daredevil, the, on March 12, from 5:30 to 11, during the crawl, the road won't be closed. So this basically just will create some space to park a couple of food trucks from participating vendors. You know, the Foote Wine and Daredevil and even Big Woods have pretty limited food options, but they're all participating in the event. So just to have a place to stage food trucks during the event. And that is the request for your consideration this evening.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the blocking off of parking spaces on the 12th of March.
A second.
Been a motion and a second to approve the blocking off of parking spaces on Main Street for the event. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Next is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our Clerk Treasurer. Monty?
Thank you, Mr. President. February 6 through February 19 is the range of dates that I'm submitting for claims for this period, and I would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims presented by Clerk Treasurer.
A second.
Been a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented by our Clerk Treasurer. Any questions from the council? I've forgotten this. Any comments from our audience? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Monty?
Yes, sir. Same dates apply to the February 6 through February 19 on the utility adjustments. And again, would appreciate your approval.
President, I move that we approve the adjustments presented by Clerk Treasurer.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the utility adjustments. Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the audience? All those in favor of approving the utility adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Anything else, Monty?
Just briefly, sir. One of the negative things we have to do at times is file liens against property for failure to pay their sewer bills. And we sent out 500 letters for pre-lean, pre-leans to the people and ownership of the properties. That was a couple of weeks ago. So far, we've had 162 of those being paid in full, totaling so far about 30, almost $32,000. I think the total for the 500's gonna be close to $260,000, if I remember correctly. These were ones that a year ago, the person handling those liens for the, for my office, were not going back to ones that were, quote, inactive. And we found that in the last few months, and that's the cleanup process, again, to get that off the books. And so far, it's working well, and people understand, and...
How many dollars is it, Monty?
Right now, we've collected about $32,000. Of the 162, the 500 have paid, but I think the total of 500 is totaling around $250,000, which again, is money that's been owed to town for two, three years, and needs to be paid. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a report from our department supervisors. We will begin with our Street Department and Wendell Walters.
Good evening, council. Just a couple of updates on the department. With this weather, we've been out to pothole patching. You've seen the sweeper truck outrunning. Sad thing is, it's gonna come to an end Wednesday, Thursday. We got snow coming in. So everybody be careful, we'll be out working then. I just wanted to do a thank you to Gary for updating my WWII office furniture, as he said, to some updated equipment. Greatly appreciate it. And that kind of catches it up. It's been a unique winter. We haven't had to run the salt trucks as much. The labor and fuel cost is down, but these little hit, miss, snow events cost us two and three days of work. So spring's around the corner.
Thank goodness.
Can I add something to that? Just so it's clear on the record. Someone at my church worked for a company downtown, and they were moving to a new location up on the north side of Indiana. They were going to discard all their office furniture. So I found out about it, and they, I'm simply a messenger that we've got some free furniture for several spots in the town, so it's great.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Wendell. Next is our Water Works, and Steve Hurst.
Good evening. It's been pretty quiet the past since I saw you last. Both plants are running well. Well, service plant's out of service right now, but the maintenance work is going real well, particularly with the warmer weather. Distribution system, we've hardly had any incidents out there since the first of the year. Way below our normal water main breakage totals by this time.
Thank you.
So, you know, things are going very well. I would like to note that I told you last time that we went to, co-presented with Structure Point on our new intake and the new design. It went pretty well, I thought. In fact, I got a message from Karen, who I presented this with today, that there has been some interest from consultants that have clients that draw water from Shadow Creeks like we do. This may be an option for those water plants to redesign and be able to bring their water in on a consistent basis like we do now. So it was an experience. I don't normally do stuff like that, but I thought it went well, and it's good to hear that we're getting some feedback on that. So that pretty much concludes my report for this evening. So any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Wastewater Department, and Norm Berry.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Everything's running fine right now. Plant's doing well, not having any major issues. Continue to treat around four, four and a half million gallons a day. Couple of upgrade projects that are going on down at the plant are moving along. Clarifier project is about 95% complete now, and we're getting ready to replace a very outdated motor control center in one of our buildings. So that project should be starting soon. Give you a little update on the sewer rehabilitation project, the sewer manhole rehabilitation project. We had a pre-construction meeting with InSiCi Forum last week, and Wendell and the street crew and all of us met with them, and hopefully that should get started out in the Farley area. And I don't know if they're gonna start Wenton area, too, aren't they?
Yes.
Hopefully next week, weather permitting. Last thing, currently working on my annual report, and I had a couple of fun facts that I wanted to share with you. It kind of illustrates the service that we provide down there. But in 2015, we treated over 1.8 billion gallons of raw sewage. So can you imagine 1.8 billion gallons of raw sewage going into Big Eagle Creek, which is what it did before we had the plant? So we also did that at 97% treatment efficiency. We met all of our compliance requirements, met all of our permit requirements, something that we're pretty proud of. It's, it sounds simple, but it's, to do that 365 days a year, it takes a major effort. And so I want to commend my entire staff for that. And that's my report.
Great. Good job, Norm. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm.
Next is a report from our Town Manager, Ian.
Mr. President, I got a couple items I'm gonna cover. Wanted to let everyone know we had a pre-bid meeting on Dry Run. Your next council meeting, we're gonna be recommending a lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the construction work on Dry Run. It's not gonna start until the summertime, but procedurally, we want to get the bids in now so we can take advantage of favorable pricing, get these things scheduled earlier. And I'm really pleased to report that this is the point in the progress where the grant-writing, regulatory geeks like me get out of the way, and people like Wendell and Norm take it over. So, you know, good luck with that.
Ian, if I can ask a quick, real quick on that.
Yep.
There's been some comments or concerns from residents that I've heard regarding that. If they have questions?
I mean, the best person to contact, if you have questions about the project itself, you know, construction, or sort of the next steps in the process, would be to just contact me. A quick email would be best. I, Niccolini, at Speedway, I N dot gov. But if you have questions about whether or not you're in the floodplain, or whether or not you'll be in the floodplain, you know, we probably won't be the best resource for that. There's a couple places to check out. It's M S C Map Service Center dot FEMA dot gov. You can put in your address, and you can look it up there. I would also encourage folks that sort of, I guess the way to describe it is between the track, Inland Hurst, 25th, and Crawfordsville, but more toward the south of 22nd Street, and typically not as far west as Gerard. But if you're in that area, that general area, it's worth reaching out to your insurance company, just to find out what, if you're in it, and what those rates will be. It's typically a lot cheaper to buy it before you're compelled to do so by FEMA. I mean, for us, we're working on the, right now, we're working on the final permitting with regulatory agencies, so we can build this thing in the summer, take the construction as built, and submit that as part of a letter of map revision to establish the new floodplain. We did a piece, provided a lot of background information to the Speedway Town Press. That was in last week's issue. The, as far as the letter of map provision, we did get some good news this week. IDNR is actually requiring us to submit a letter of map revision. So they've looked at our modeling and said, "Wow, this is really a significant change. We're not gonna approve this project unless you agree to do a letter of map revision later on." So, which we were like, "Well, duh, that's why we're doing it." But, I mean, we didn't say that exactly, but you know, that's what we were thinking. Anyway, that's the, that's the process.
How long have those homes been in the floodplain?
So I mean, you know, some of them, my understanding is that they're pre-firm houses. In other words, they were built before the flood insurance rate maps existed. I think most of the firms, the rate maps took, I think they went into effect in the 70s around here, late 70s. I couldn't say for certain, though. So a lot of them had, if you were built before the maps took place, which most of them were, you got a discount. What's called a pre-firm discount. Congress did not reauthorize the pre-firm discount. So over the next five-ish years, those rates are gonna continue to climb to be more closer to market rates. Just another reason why we wanted to be proactive and get this project done.
I guess that's my point, is the comments that I've heard have tried to call out the council that we're not concerned about this, but I think we're taking action on something that's been there for close to 50 to 60 years, and it's gonna take some time for that to happen. And it's because of your efforts when you came in office and saw that this is something that needs to be done, and it's gonna be paid to be done, and it's gonna take, I said it in my speech, 99.97% of the homes out, close to that, and it's gonna take some time for that to happen.
I mean, our plan is to submit the letter of map provision as soon as we're done with construction. We're dealing with some regulatory agencies. Look, I could understand why somebody would be frustrated, though, with that process. I mean, especially if you'd never had flood insurance before, and now the maps are saying you need to be included. But I will also say that I'm not even aware of any other places that are taking on projects to reduce the size of the floodplain to begin with. I mean, a lot of places just will say, "Hey, look, that's FEMA. That's, you take it up with the federal government," and not be concerned about it. We tried to be proactive in this particular instance. I would have loved to have seen it get done quicker, but grant funds and regulatory compliance and construction seasons and kind of coordinated around a race, and then submitting all this information once it's complete to be reviewed by federal agencies is in fact a time-consuming effort. But it's a high priority for us and not for a lot of other places.
Great. Anything else, Ian?
I got a few. I wanna, I got some shout-outs. I wanna, I wanna recognize Monty and Wendell. They put together a ton of effort and a ton of information to submit reimbursements to the Indiana Department of Transportation. We had a number of reimbursable expenses related to projects historically completed, and it's a Herculean task of paperwork to get those submitted. But we've heard back from Indot that those federal funds that we're entitled to are on their way to our accounts, and those guys did a great job pulling all that stuff together, especially as quickly as they did. So, nice job, fellows. I'll let everybody know, March 7, there's an ATC hearing, the Indiana Alcohol Tobacco Commission. There are two items in Speedway that are on the agenda for that. The first is 1911 Grill, for which you guys approve the written commitments associated with that permit. The second is the redevelopment commission's, the redevelopment commission has a 210 permit, a three-way permit that will be licensed over to Big Woods to facilitate their project. So both of those will be on the agenda. So if you get a notice that says, "Town of Speedway or Speedway Redevelopment Commission is petitioning for a liquor license," that's what it's for. It's not like we're gonna open a bar. Although, you know, diminishing revenues, it could be lucrative, but I digress. The red tape would be far too strenuous. The, in the same vein, Speedway Undercarding and 1911 Grill are now hiring. You can check it out, staffing at S I carding, with a K, S I carding dot com, or staffing at 1911grill dot com, looking to hire people. We've had pre-bid meeting, or pre-construction meetings with OMR and Hooncoast, as projects are both getting underway. You know when they're printing "coming soon" signs, that something needs to be coming up out of the ground. So they should be going vertical here in the coming weeks. Right now, they're just finalizing some of the site-specific permitting. I wanted to give a quick update on the properties that the redevelopment commission owns. There's 23 acres out at 465 and Crawfordsville Road. We'll be issuing a request for proposal- We'll be issuing a request for proposals in March to see what sale and development opportunities exist there, as well as 1346 Main and 1426 Main. Both of those properties are owned by the Redevelopment Commission. In order to go through that process, determine the level of development interest and whether or not we have interested purchasers, we have to go through a process that opens that up through a request for proposal. So those will be taking place in the next month. That's typically a 90-day process on the, on the short end. But it sort of depends on the proposals that you get and the nature of the real estate transaction. Just a couple of quick updates on the Speedway Marketplace on the south side of Crawfordsville Road at High School. They have LOIs, but I don't know if they have signed leases yet. So we're gonna be announcing end users here any day now. There's, there's four entities already, retail, commercial entities, QSR, quick-service restaurant-type users, that are gonna be pulling permits. Once those are done, that's, then becomes a matter of public record. We'll know, we'll be able to mention who those users are. So that's, that's, I think that's it. I think that's all I have to report on this evening, Mr. President, unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Ian. Next is a report from our council members, and we will begin with Councilor Eileen Fisher.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jason Delisle.
Just real quick, just wanted to remind citizens of the town, you know, with the warmer weather, those driving throughout the town, there's likely to be kids, families out and about. So just wanted to remind people to be cautious and aware. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Next is Councilor Gary Riggs.
Nothing to report.
Vice President or Council, Jeff Matthews.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
I will, the final thing is a report for myself, and I have one item. And I'd like to thank everyone that attended the State of the Town that was at the Motor Speedway. And also a little commercial for our cable access. They will now be putting, or they already have put a lot of their programming on YouTube. If you search SCTV and then put in Speedway Cable, that's how I got it to come up today. They have basketball games on there, the State of the Town addresses on there, as well as the video that they did of the recap of the year 2015. So a lot of good viewing to watch, because I know you just wanna watch more council meetings. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:31.